We'll call the February Council Meeting to Order. We will run the roll. We've got no computer system tonight. We're going to do this manually, so it should be pretty straightforward. All the person Nash is the only member absent. All right, thank you all for being here and thank you for joining us here this evening in person and those watching at home. Next item on the agenda is I'd invite members to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Those are attached.
Motion to approve and place on file.
The motion, is there a second?
No.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next item on the agenda is the reading, I'm sorry, the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure. Those wishing to address the body may do so tonight on an item that is appearing on the agenda this evening. You may do so after being recognized by a member of the council in which you will be invited to the podium and be allowed to speak for five minutes. And make sure you use the microphone button so that you're picked up for those watching at home. Next item on the agenda, item six is Mayor Ruwink's report. Council members before the meeting tonight did not make the packets on Friday unfortunately through the clerk's office, but you have a written report from myself indicating updates on a number of initiatives. The Rapid Improvement Initiative, which last March was approved and has, we've concluded our training and the steering team is continuously meeting. In March, I will provide a comprehensive update as it will be its one-year anniversary. On January 29th, seeing through my belief of a more informed and engaged citizenry, I gave my second and 2014 annual State of the City address. Again, I'm thankful to the legal women voters of the Wisconsin Rapids area for sponsoring the event and the library for hosting us. The event focused on what we've accomplished in last year and what is to come in 2014. In the last year and a half since I took office, I've spent a great deal of time finding ways to make Wisconsin Rapids a more attractive and competitive city, better positioned for growth. I believe that this goal requires a strong foundation and in many respects significant shifts from our traditional ways of doing business. At the address, I highlighted some of our accomplishments, the certification of the Rapids East Commerce Park, Brownfield's assessment for the preparation of redevelopment, highlighted some community involvement, Rapid serves initiatives, as well as the update on Rapid Improvement, the Lean Six Sigma Process Improvement Initiative that we have. Also made several announcements for the upcoming months, which focused on three areas, growing our local economy, enhancing our quality of life, and the modernization for effectiveness and efficiency of city government. Particularly, the partnership with Google in 2014 to help get Wisconsin Rapids businesses online. And then two initiatives, aimed at streamlining and cutting the red tape for prospective developments and projects, namely the citywide business advocacy team, CBAT, and Grow Rapids, an online portal for businesses and prospective businesses to access information available to them from the city's perspective. Also talked about enhancing quality of life, drew attention to Parks Initiative and an investment in our parks, as well as the opportunity for residents to participate in a beautification and sustainability mayor's councils. I thank you all for your commitment and your support and consideration of the support of the initiatives as we move forward. Also included in an update on infrastructure, had a meeting here last week as part of an ongoing discussion we've had on infrastructure, whether it's broadband or grid or wastewater or water, all of which kind of fall in line under the auspices of infrastructure. WDC joined us for a conversation around what resources might be available to cities our size to help us as we move forward in understanding and looking for opportunities with our infrastructure. Good news on that, that they are excited that a city is now taking advantage of potential or is considering taking advantage of a program they have available to them for us to potentially be used as a best practice for other regions in the state. Talked about city-owned property, something that was brought up in a community update I had done recently, an overview of a team that had done some work here at City Hall to look at parcels that the city owns to determine whether or not we can or should propose the sale of certain properties. And that initiative we brought to the Finance and Property Committee for their consideration in the near future. Talked about a conference I attended, the U.S. Conference of Mayors for two days in the end of January. Talked about the importance for us and really the relevance of my attendance at that meeting, particularly on transportation. Was able to meet with the U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Anthony Fox, who was a former mayor. Talked about the Tiger Grant Opportunity, particularly for the East Side Bypass Program and potential funding opportunities that will be available to cities and rural cities of our size in the coming months this year. And also mentioned a note about Urban Alliance, as I participate in the Urban Alliance Board and we talked about the state surplus and potential uses of the state surplus restoring the cuts to shared revenue programs and other municipal programs, as well as the continued kind of raid on local control happening in Madison. So both of which, we had a press conference on and made state administration and legislators very aware of the city perspective on these issues. And finally, a note on proclamations, only one proclamation issued in February and that was two-on-one day in Wisconsin Rapids on February 11th. As always, I welcome your comments, your questions and your feedback. Item seven, seven A is hold a scheduled publication on the vacation of Clivene Avenue between 14th Place South and 15th Place South, see attachment number one. Whereas pursuant of section 661003 of the Wisconsin State Statutes, the Common Council of the City of Wisconsin Rapids has determined that the public interest requires the vacation and discontinuance of the following described alley or street. Olive Clivene Avenue, lying between the east right-of-way of 14th Place South and the west right-of-way of 15th Place South, being adjacent to lots 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, and 82 of Rosewood Estates, fourth addition to the City of Wisconsin Rapids, being part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of section 29, Township 22 North, Range 6 East, City of Wisconsin Rapids, Wood County, Wisconsin. Whereas the city clerk was directed to publish notices of the public hearing to be held on said proposed vacation at the City Hall Council Chambers 444, West Grand Avenue, Wisconsin Rapids, at a regular meeting of the Common Council held on the 18th day of February 2014 at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter could be heard. Whereas the said notices were duly published in the Wisconsin Rapids Daily Tribune, the official newspaper of said city, on January 27th, February 3rd, and February 10th, 2014. And whereas the Planning Commission and Public Works Committee have recommended the vacation and discontinuance of said street and alley. Whereas a hearing on said resolution was had on the regular meeting of the Common Council on said, of said City of Wisconsin Rapids on the 18th day of February 2014, at which time all interested parties were given an opportunity to be heard. Now therefore be it resolved, be it hereby resolved by the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council, that the public street alley described above be and is hereby vacated and abandoned, subject to utility easements, and the city clerk is hereby directed to have recorded in the Office of the Register of Deeds, Wood County, Wisconsin, certified copy of the resolution together with a map showing location thereof. Council members, what are your wishes regarding, I'm sorry, a public hearing? So I'd like to ask if anyone is wishing to speak on this particular street vacation request. First time, second time, anyone wishing to speak on the request? Third and final time, anyone wishing to speak on the request? If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the resolution. We have a motion and a, is there a second? We have a motion, I'm gonna, somebody recording, Dave's got it here, okay, thank you. The motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Item B is a resolution providing for the vacation of Clivene Avenue between 14th Place and 15th Place, see attachment number two. And that's actually what I had read previously, I'm sorry about that. See the staple caught the number there. All the persons, what are your wishes regarding that resolution? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Item eight, under new business, Mayor Ruwink's appointment to the Redevelopment Authority, see attachment number three. February 13th, 2014, to all older persons, the following appointment is submitted for your approval. For the Redevelopment Authority, John Harper, 3521 14th Street South, reappointed for a five-year term expiring February 1st, 2018. John, I see you're here this evening, would you like to address the body at all on this matter? Okay, thank you. It's a pretty straightforward request and I appreciate your willingness to serve. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that appointment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thanks, John, again for your willingness and be remiss if I didn't thank others that have previously been appointed or have stepped off commission. So thank you all for your service that serve on many boards and commissions, thank you. Item nine, Standing Council Committee reports. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee meeting held February 18th.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to everyone watching here this evening and everyone, or here this evening and everyone watching at home. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:30 PM this evening in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Tim DeSorci, Tom Raome, Shane Blazer, and David Farmbrow. I apologize if I said that wrong. Item two, an application for a secondhand article dealer and a secondhand jewelry dealer license filed by Joseph Mowery for the premises located at 2741 West Grand Avenue. It was moved and seconded to approve that application and the motion carried. Item three was beverage operator license applications, and you can see the new applications listed below. There were no renewals and none recommended denied by the Police Department. It was moved and seconded to approve the new licenses and that motion carried. Item four was audit of the bills. The committee audited the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve, that motion carried. And it was moved and seconded to adjourn, that motion carried and the meeting adjourned at 5:39 PM. With that, I'd make a motion to approve these minutes.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All the person Raome?
I guess just a comment and Gina and I, being at the meeting, asked a few questions and I called item number two. I guess would you or somebody say basically, I think, why it's, formality isn't the right word, but if they meet certain requirements that it's hard, if not impossible, really to say no, because why would you?
Well, my understanding, and we had this discussion, so I appreciate that, and we talked with Shane and Sue, this was something that we said we may need you to weigh in on a bit, but if they meet the zoning requirements, if they meet the license application requirements, I'm not so sure that we turn them down just because we either have too many or, you know what I mean? I don't know, I haven't been given good parameters or don't understand if there are parameters on how many of these dealerships we have. And I think your question really went to, they really seem to have popped up a lot recently.
Yeah, that, and you know, I guess there probably isn't a limit on how many that I know of either.
I couldn't answer that question.
The other thing is, was if, as far as them meeting, if it's building codes or what they'd have to do. And I had, the question I had with that, go to a different committee possibly, or commission of how it should look like other businesses that we deal with. And that's like basically where I was coming from. I don't know what the inside of this place looks like. If it's what I think it is, it sits well off the road. So I get, those were the questions really that I had of that. And you know, there's other ones where we have them, keep lights from going into neighbors, that won't happen there, but other things, how it looks on the outside and that, so.
When, when we get the application, we get the thumbs up or the thumbs down regarding the fact that they have followed all the proper applications necessary. So then, at the point that it gets to the committee, it's really a matter of what would we base the denial on? And not having anyone before us to say, you know, here's a reason why I think we move ahead, but you raise some very good points.
And Your Honor, I think that may be worthy of the council to, I'd like them to further the discussion on that to see if there is something that maybe should be done as far as what a business looks like. Or, I'm not saying it in the right way, but as such goes through the Planning Commission and I'm not saying it has to be that, but as they do that and then that comes back to the council and that for a final vote, so I guess if we could just continue looking at it.
Right. We're just, for your information, the attorney's looking at which code we're looking at.
Right, I mean, it would be, it would be a business just like any other business. I mean, there are fire codes in terms of, you know, occupancy and exits, I'm assuming, and there are property maintenance codes regarding what buildings are supposed to look like. So I guess, I'm not, it's true that in this zoning, it would not require a Plan Commission approval for, you know, for this use or for the building. It's just subject to our regular zoning codes and property maintenance codes. I'm, I'm looking up, I apologize, I had another meeting to go to and I, I didn't realize the importance of this and I'm, I'm sorry that I, I didn't ahead of time, but I can, and there is a chapter on secondhand dealers and I'm trying to find it right now, if you don't happen to know the chapter, I'll hit 134. I don't have a 134, 1657 maybe?
[inaudible]
The, they also, they actually have to apply through the state. There are additional rules regarding keeping track of the buyers, you know, keeping their list for so long. So actually, it's more of a state law that we have, we have adopted by ordinance and we charge a separate permit for that, but it's basically just the state, the state law is really what regulates them and we're just kind of locally permitting them. And, and the same business ordinances would apply to them as to any other. I believe you would have the discretion to deny the license if you wanted to. I guess, you know, what, I guess the reasoning would be important as to why, but yeah, we have a few of them in town and I'm assuming once, if the premises has been checked out as being okay for a business, then that's probably as far as the city's going to go with it.
All the person Raome, does that answer your question? Okay. Any further discussion on the Finance and Property Report? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Item nine B is a Public Works Committee meeting held February 4th. Chairman Raome? Make sure your mic is on, thank you.
Should have left it on. Public Works Committee met at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014, in the first floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Dave Laspa and Joe Weichstedt. List of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, the meeting was called order. Item two, request from Virginia and Vernon Hildebrandt of 1421 Rosewood Avenue and Dennis Brown of 1420 Rosewood Avenue of the Rosewood subdivision for three streetlights within the subdivision on Rosewood Avenue at the 16th Street South, 15th Place South, and 14th Place South. Virginia and Vernon were present for this item. There is a motion and a second to check into the cost difference to install LED lights instead of high-pressure sodium streetlights and report back at the next committee meeting and that motion carried. There was a motion then, and seconded, to install streetlights on Rosewood Avenue at the 16th Street South, 15th Place South, and 14th Place South, and that motion carried. Item three, adopt the updated Chapter 32 entitled Construction Site Erosion. This update is needed due to the Wisconsin DNR updating regulations. There was a motion and a second to adopt the updated Chapter 32 entitled Construction Site Erosion. That motion carried and that's attachment one in our packet. Item four, adopt the updated Chapter 35 entitled Post-Construction Stormwater Management Zoning. This update is needed due to the Wisconsin DNR updating regulations. There was a motion and a second to adopt the updated Chapter 35 entitled Post-Construction Stormwater Management Zoning. That motion carried and that's item two, or attachment two in our packet. Item five, adopt the updated Chapter 340.008 entitled Truck Routes. There was a motion and a second to adopt the updated Chapter 340.008 entitled Truck Routes. That motion carried and that's attachment three in our packet. Item six, professional services agreement with MSA Professional Services for analysis of stormwater facilities. This new contract is for 2014 in the amount and not to exceed $5,000, which is funded in the 2014 budget. There's a motion and a second, enter into a contract for professional services agreement with MSA Professional Services for analysis of stormwater facilities. The motion carried. Item seven was to review the proposed 2014 public work schedule. The committee reviewed the schedule. Item eight, we reviewed the referral list. Items 13 of 2013 and item one of 2014 can be removed. And item nine was to adjourn, there was a motion to adjourn and the second, motion carried, the meeting adjourned at 6:07 PM. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Public Works Committee meeting report. Any discussion? All the person, Patrick?
Thank you. Just a question regarding item number two, and I wasn't at the meeting that night, so I'm sorry I missed that, but I guess I'm kind of curious as to the reason for the placement of streetlights within the subdivision. I was, as usual, I'm playing on my phone, mapping it out on Google. I have to imagine that there can't be a serious amount of traffic on that particular roadway, you know, not like you would have on Lincoln Street or something along those lines in certain areas. So I, I guess I'm just kind of curious as to, did it meet warrants to, to have streetlights installed there or what was the case here?
This present city policy is to have one, in a residential area, one light per block, which this meets, meets that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
And I had met with the, the requesters on two occasions just to talk about, it was dark, I mean, went over there personally just to take a look at it and it was just more of a safety concern that they had raised, just mostly intersections are lit, so I think that both, both questions, both answers lend itself to the request.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further discussion on the Public Works Committee report? All right, seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Item C, the Human Resources Committee meeting held February 4th.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met, the Human Resource Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014, in the third floor conference room. All members were present. Also present were Kevin Anderson, Beth Beckenowitz, Dale Bates, Tim DeSorci, Jeff Francis of Nationwide, Dave Laspa, Jim Nitzel, and Travis Shalinski. Item one called to order. Item two, discussed request to approve out-of-state travel for training for an engineering department employee. Motion was made and passed to approve the request for an engineering department employee to attend training at Northwestern Traffic Institute in Evanston, Illinois in 2015. Establish summer labor rate, labor wage rates. Motion was made and seconded to increase the summer labor wage rate to $10 per hour. Discuss and approve summer seasonal temporary hires. Motion was made, seconded, to approve summer seasonal temporary hires. Ten in the street department, two in park, two wastewater, pardon me, ten for street and park, two wastewater treatment plant, three Department of Public Works limited-term employees, three engineering technicians, and one human resources intern. In open session, the committee voted to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent C. Consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Motion is made and seconded to go into closed session as noted above. Roll call was taken, motion passed unanimously. In closed session, the committee considered a non-union employee's request for additional vacation time in lieu of a six-month step increase. In closed session, the committee will return to open session for a possible recommendation. Motion was made and seconded to return to open session. A motion was made by all the person World, seconded by all the person Nash, to approve the employee's request, pardon me, for an additional week of vacation in lieu of a six-month step increase. He will receive the next, next increase in his vacation credit based on the number of years he has worked for the city, which would be in his seventh year of work. Motion passed. Alderman Stack opposed the motion. Presentation and approval of a new deferred compensation plan. Motion was made and seconded to approve the new deferred compensation plan as presented by Jeff Francis from Nationwide. See attachment one. Motion to adjourn. Motion was made and passed. Motion was made and passed to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at four-fifty-five PM. Robert Nash, chairman. I move for adoption of these minutes. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the report? Elder person Raume?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jim, if I can, I guess, ask why you opposed the one on item five, because I have a hard time with it, I guess, myself, so...
I think it, for myself, it came down to, we try to treat each equally as best we can, as any employer would, and I felt that this didn't meet that standard for myself. So, that's why I voted in opposition to it.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
I guess, Your Honor, I'd like to have a separate vote on that item, and I'd, so I'd like to hold out four, or five.
Item five? Okay. On the balance of the report, and then we'll move on that one in a second. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote on every item except for item five on that report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Okay, item five on that report. Elder person Raume?
Your Honor, I just held it out for a separate vote, so I could vote no.
Okay. Any questions for the HR Director, or any other members of the committee? Okay. Any other discussion on item five? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, signify by, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
To an opposition? That passes. Next item on our agenda, item ten, miscellaneous reports. Housing Authority held December eighteenth, the police chief's report for January. The City Treasurers monthly reports for November and December. Police and Fire Commission held January eighth. The Wastewater Treatment Commission held February fifth. The Wisconsin Rapids Police Department quarterly report for October, November, and December. Waterworks and Lighting Commission held January ninth, their special meeting. The City Treasurers report on investments for December and January. The Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly organizational summary for January. The Southwood County Airport Commission held February sixth. River Cities Community Access Report for January. And the last item is a committee of the whole, held January twenty-first. Council members, any questions? All right, what are your wishes regarding those reports? Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Elder person Kirkpatrick, you've got questions?
Thank you. We've had a short meeting, so I hope you'll humor me with just one or two questions to the police chief. Was just looking at the report that you've gotten here, and I just kind of happened to notice that there are a couple different things in here. Calls for service counts by activity. And, I mean, we all know what the police do, what the department members do, more or less, from day to day, but just a couple things kind of stood out here to me, delineated down, and I guess, I don't know, so I'd kind of like to know myself, and I think it'd behoove the citizens to know some of the other things that the officers do. You've shown here escort, escort Chapter fifty-one, and escort funeral is pretty self-explanatory, and then also walking the beat. So, if you might explain what some of those differences are?
Well, the escorts are really transports, so when we have a mental health issue, concern, and we end up doing an emergency detention, we're going to transport or escort that individual that's in our custody under an emergency detention to a mental health facility for evaluation. So, that's that, that's that type of escort. We'll also assist our funeral homes with long, or with processions from churches to mausoleum, or to our cemeteries. We provide that service. And walking the beat really is getting back to the good old-fashioned police work and getting out of the squad, and taking some time to walk the mall, walk West, East Grand, visiting their schools, get out and walk the beat, and do an enforcement, and interaction with our public in that regard.
Great, thank you.
Other questions of the reports? I'd like to point out, the Airport Commission took delivery of its new snow removal equipment, and as we all know, we've needed that pretty regularly this winter. The airport will be looking at a significant cost savings by operating their own equipment out at the airport, so we're very excited the commission has taken that step to be fiscally responsible. Yes, elder person Stack?
I had one question. No, I had missed it. On the Wastewater Treatment Commission minutes, item three was the termination of agreement for treatment of water treatment plant waste. Who and what is being terminated? What is changing?
Mr. Nitzel, would you like to respond to the question? I don't know what it's related to, but I'm looking...
Water and Light put in their new treatment system to precipitate out their sludge, which really decreased the amount of sludge that they sent us. So, we felt that since the amount that they were sending us was so low that we would revert back to the normal charges that anybody else would get. They were getting, they were getting a forty percent discount, and that agreement was made in like ninety-six or something. It was quite a long time ago.
If I could, if I could just add, I just recently talked to Jim about this, and I think this is something, that the contract is something that basically wastewater would be making a recommendation on it, and the council really should be the one deciding that. So, that will come back to the council probably next month, and that's really a recommendation from the Treatment Commission to do that. And I know there's been some discussions since then, so maybe it would, you know, all parties will be a little happier with, once it gets to the council, what the status of that agreement is, but that will come to you probably next month, I think.
So, we're, this contract was something as considered between two separate entities?
Well, it was between, it was between the city and Water and Light, the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Water and Light Commission. It was basically determining what rate they were paying on the water they sent to us. And they were getting, given a volume discount because of the amount of what they were sending us. Now, it's much less, so the question was, should they be getting that same forty percent reduction? So, that's really the issue that will be coming before you, is what rate they should be paying. Does that kind of summarize it, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
And I should've come in sooner, but Water and Light, what waste do they send to the sewer commission?
Jim probably...
Waste Water Commission.
Part of their water process, right, Jim? So, it's...
Yeah, they have suspended solids in the water that comes in, and they precipitate out the solids and the iron that does come into the plant, so water, the iron gets pulled out of the water, and that creates a sludge, which they used to dump into the river, and the DNR said, you can't do that anymore, so then they ended up sending it to the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, for now, I'll conclude, I'll just have to talk...
So, it's a waste product of the water process?
Treatment process, yes.
Treatment process for drinking water.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the reports?
I had seen that.
Seeing none, we got a motion and a second to move into a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Item eleven, items for new business at the March eighteenth council. We've got a resolution approving the Westside Assessors Plan number twenty-six. Item twelve is referral of communication to committees.
Your Honor?
Yes. Elder person Young?
I would like to make a referral to the next Public Works, for the next Public Works Committee meeting, to review and possibly change the speed limit on Second Avenue.
Okay, and that was just discussed amongst the chairman. Chairman, did you have any, anything real quick on that, or is that appropriate to refer to the Public Works Committee? We had a conversation with the senior engineer.
I think you can refer it to the committee.
Okay, just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I believe if I make the referral as a committee member, or council member, excuse me, it does go on the agenda, correct?
Right, I mean, it's as if the council is saying unanimous consent to refer this to the committee. I guess if someone has objection, they could voice it, but generally, you take referrals from other older persons.
Okay, any other referral of communications to committees? Seeing none, we've got a newcomer to the council tonight, Craig Free. Welcome to the council. He's a student at Lincoln High School. Craig, do you want to introduce yourself? And make sure you hit the push button on the base of the mic.
Yeah, like you said, I'm Craig Free. And this is my first time here. We had some changes around with our representatives, so it's my first time here. It's nice to be here. I guess I don't know exactly what to expect, or what am I talking about Lincoln right now?
If you'd like to just introduce yourself, that's fine.
Okay, well, then, yeah, I'm Craig. I'm senior, I'll be graduating soon, and I'm excited for that, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, you've got a counterpart there from assumption that can kind of show you the ropes as well.
Next-door neighbor, yeah.
Okay, all right. And we've got somebody that's leaving us, Nathaniel Shuda. Thank you for being here. He is going off to Oshkosh, so I wanted to recognize Nathaniel Shuda from the Daily Tribune, who will be taking a new position over in the eastern part of the state. So, thank you for covering our meetings and all the great reporting you've done for the city in your tenure, so wish you all the best. And I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and second, all in favor? Opposed, stand adjourned. Go ahead and go home and vote if you haven't done so already. Thank you for being here.